Could rise and join me in the presence?
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could join me in a moment of silence, please? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the August 19th board retreat and the September 19th, September 16th school board meeting minutes. Can we do it all at once? Do we have any?
There were, there were a change in each I would need to make.
All right, so do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve each of those with an amendment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, if I feel it. Amendments, please?
On August 19th, I thought we might change Brian's title from interim superintendent to acting, because I think he was acting on that particular day, because he hadn't completed the contract. When we were at the Goffstown Board Retreat.
Thank you, I was thinking it was just about to be announced.
It was just about to be announced, and I think he probably signed it the next day.
Probably.
I don't know, he'll have to tell us. But I didn't want someone to see that, try to put two together if it wasn't. The other one I had was on our meeting of September 9th. The very back last vote we had was to seal the minutes. The vote should be 7-0-1, I did abstain, and I abstained because I wanted to ask the question. And I was too late.
And he called the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we can make those two changes, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other changes? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Very unanimous, thank you. Correspondence folder, I have a correspondence folder here, it's substitute reports.
Yes, I'd also like to give out, this is a letter that we just received from the Lions Club regarding the Lions Field, and I will speak to this during my superintendent's report.
Do we have enough copy?
I think I said that, I'll talk to Mrs. Trump later.
Okay. All right, commendations, good news?
Can I just interject just one moment?
Please.
I wanted to go back to the minutes. The minutes we flipped, three of the minutes, because I don't know if I actually said it, or did I, was it inferred, all three that we voted?
My understanding was that that was what you said.
Yeah, eight, nineteen, nine-nine, and nine-sixteen.
Would those change?
With?
To those minutes?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, commendations, good news. I think that one. Go ahead.
Starting with Maple Avenue, Maple Avenue had the parent information nights last week, and they had really good turnout. The classroom teachers did a wonderful job sharing information about the core content areas and school operations. And this week is the annual PFT Ice Cream Social, and that is from 6:30 to 7:30. And they're going to have self-guided tours of the children's classrooms and ice cream. It's a very popular event every year. Glen Lake news, Governor Hassan is named October as Parent Involvement in Education Month for vote to remote family engagement in education. And the special education team members at Glen Lake, specifically Jillian McPhail, who's the autism support teacher, Kathy Stoyl, who's a kindergarten teacher, Julian Driscoll, who's speech pathologist, Kristi Knones, who's occupational therapist, Colleen Cassidy, BCBA, and Leslie Doster, principal, were nominated and selected for a recognition award. And that award is for going above and beyond expectations in partnering with families in the special education process. So the recognition celebration is being held October 1st in Concord. Bartlett had its open houses on Tuesday, September 17th for grades one and two, and Wednesday, September 18th for grades three and four. The staff were pleased with the attendance on both evenings. Parents were able to meet teachers and hear what's expected in each classroom. Several classes had the parents and students do scavenger hunts in the class and around the building on both evenings. Kate McGrath and Kathy Riley were available to do fingerprinting for volunteering. The PTA and the Boy Scouts also had tables set up for joining up. There's another drawing of the school which was received and is displayed in the lobby. This special drawing was donated by the family of Skip Cody, who was principal at Bartlett for over 30 years and passed away last fall, and the drawing was a gift to Mr. Cody on his retirement in 1994.
Asha High School, we've got, we saw test scores at our last faculty meeting, and they're looking good again from last year, M cap scores and SAT scores. So we're still making improvements in that area. We had the cultural event on Friday with some visitors from Central America, and that was, that went well. All the students were really great and respectful, and there was a good turnout. They also worked with the dance classes on Thursday, and they had a great time. This week, we're going to be starting video announcements instead of morning announcements just on the intercom, so that should be interesting. They're going to be, the video production classes are going to be shooting them early, and then we're going to be playing them on projectors, so it will be a practical application for video production, and then hopefully a little bit more captivating for the morning classes and they'll listen better. So that should be interesting.
Sounds cool.
And then we also have a new thing called Saturday School, which is of an attempt to kind of improve Saturday detention and offer extra help time for, we're going to have more teachers there available to help students who need help, but it will still serve as a place for students who are kind of sentenced there, and somewhere in between, students who need a little nudging, so it's just starting, and maybe it'll be good.
For Mountain View, our sports teams are doing really well this year. Cross-country, had their first invitational last Friday, so took the top 10 girls and top 10 boys out of our league. And we competed with 14 other schools with their top 10, and they did really well. It was nice to see all different schools and where we kind of ranked there. And we've seen at every meet, the students are improving their times each time. And our last home meet, both boys and girls won overall, so they did a really nice job. Soccer teams are doing really well. Most of them are doing, like, winning two out of the three games. The Boys B Team won all of their games so far. Field hockey, they just had a game today, and they tied 0-0, so it was a really good game. And volleyball is doing pretty well. The White Team is 2-3, and the volleyball Maroon has won all their games. Rollouts, we did another rollup today. We've done one every Monday for the first three Mondays of the school. And this one was the playground, because we moved that, removed the structure from the playground, so we need to kind of give them parameters, the fifth and sixth grade for recess, like, what are they going to do now, now that they don't have that to play on, and where should they be, can they play in that area? So we rolled that out today, and we'll see how that goes. The last one we did was arrival dismissal, and just kind of, let's make it on your bus, let's kind of not fool around as much. And they did such a good job that today during team time, we took them out, and they got to just have some free time and interact with some of their friends that they don't see all the time during the day, which was really exciting to see. We're starting a newspaper. They've had, I think, one meeting, but they're going to try to meet every Monday, and they're looking for editors, writers, photographers, whoever they can get to help make the newspaper more of a student voice, because we have the pause news where teachers write in, and it'd be nice to see like the perspective of the students. So they're hoping to get one of them out very soon. Student Government is having a meeting this Thursday just for the students that want to be on the Executive Board, and kind of give them a little background of what that entails. And then hopefully by mid-October, we'll have our elections done and be up and running. Some upcoming events, we have open house for fifth and seventh graders from 6:00 to 8:00 tomorrow, and then we have the sixth and eighth graders' open house this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. So hopefully there'll be a really good turnout there. The drama auditions for the musical is the 25th and 26th of this week. Our magazine drive ends tomorrow, so we're hoping to see what our count is. Right now, a lot of them are online orders, so we don't have a final count yet. And it looks like Select Chorus is doing really well, they had their first after-school meeting today.
All right, lots going on. Thank you.
All right, so as of sports, football had their first one, win in Division One, which is really exciting, and that was on Sunday or Saturday. And one thing that I thought I'd bring up is I was at a youth forum meeting the last Friday, and the anti-bullying movie that a club in our school came out with, they're going to come and present to you guys hopefully eventually about viewing the movie that they created in the different schools within the school system and possibly other different schools. So that's something that might come up soon. Our open house is on October 3rd from 6:30 to 8:30, and student ambassadors is volunteering and showing the parents around to the classes and help them get where they're going. And September 24th, the student council will be complete, because that's when freshman elections take place. And then once that occurs, we'll be up and running for homecoming, which is the first event for student council. And that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Dan?
Just a question, I heard that there's going to be something going on in Concord.
Mm-hmm.
You know, can you repeat the date, and do you have any idea what time?
I don't have the information about the time, it's a recognition, it'll be October 1st.
10-1, okay.
I don't know, Brian, if you know anything about that.
I don't have the time, I actually didn't even have 10-1, so you have a little more current information than I have.
We're on Friday next week. Oh, no.
Tuesday.
Tuesday next week, I'm on the long line, and two weeks. Thank you.
Any other commendations? Anything else? All right, public comment. Seeing none, I will go to the standing committee reports. Policy review? Do we have anything from policy review?
We met, basically it was an organizational meeting. It was cut short because we had a few reactions. So nothing, nothing really to report.
Okay. And your next meeting will be November 25th?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. PNC?
We haven't met since the last meeting. One of our goals was to get more articles out to the press, so that's the goal for September, which is coming to an end, so I'll be following up with the committee members. That's it.
Thank you, Radam. CNI?
We met last week, and we talked about our scheduling and planning out our year. We talked about several different things of maybe bringing some information later on in the year before voting comes up about what's going on, and we're having a meeting in November where the principals will all come and give an overview.
All right, thank you. Is that also November 25th, 7 o'clock? The SAU?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. All right. Budget Committee, Budget Committee met last Thursday for the first time since last May. Biggest piece coming out of that meeting is, we talked about what the schedule was going to look like for the budget and whatnot. It was agreed that the school budget would be addressed on Thursdays, because they'll start going over to the Tuesday, Thursday meeting. And the dates that we have right now are November 14th, November 21st, December 5th, and December 12th. With of course, November 14th being the initial presentation, November 21st likely being a follow-up, and then as we go along.
What are the two dates?
11:14, 11:21, 12:05, and 12:12.
Those are all Thursdays?
Those are all Thursdays, yes. Yes, they did. We didn't have a schedule like that last time, we met Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we knew what we would be addressing at any given week, but this time, we actually got pretty specific that if it's a Thursday, it's going to be the school budget.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ray, do you have an updated budget calendar beyond that to share?
We don't.
You don't, okay.
Just a question though, the 14th is the initial presentation date to the Budget Committee?
Yes, they're expecting our budget printed and delivered for the 4th, as we had discussed.
For the 4th of November?
Yes, and the intention is to have opportunity to review independently prior to presentation, where they would have questions and be ready to really discuss.
So that's an acceleration of two days. We were looking for final school board approval of the budget on November 4, and turning the completed package over to Budget Committee on November 6.
November 6, okay.
So we will accelerate by two days.
I can reach out to Pete.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anna?
A and F meeting, we met this evening, and I'd like to bring forward a manifest of That's a multi.
I can't say.
Whatever. Payroll and payroll taxes was $663,817. One thing we have to remember on this one is the LGC checks, which were a taxable event, because we're in a Section 125, so when you pay it, you're pre-tax, so your money comes off, so when you get your refund back, you kind of get taxed on it. But that's part of that number, so that number is a little low, a bit because of that. Bed activity, Easter seals, $6,400. The lighthouse, which is for two months, three students, $24,600. We have a hearing impaired teacher, Maria Jordan, that's $6,200. We have July tuition for one student at the Spalding Youth Center for $5,700. And with DCO, July services for one student for $5,700. Brian's team sales, that's sports athletic supplies and things for a number of athletics at Mountain View and Goffstown High School, $5,100 bucks. Dead River, that's for the propane tanks, the new propane tanks for Goffstown and Mountain View, was $9,000 for fuel. September, the payment to Rico for the copy machine, $7,400. SAU assessment, three months, $354,800. Our payment to the trustees to the trust fund of $275,000, that's our 2.5% contingency fund deposit, and sewer charges of $10,000. If you have any questions, Ray would love to answer.
All right, seeing no further questions, all in favor as presented?
Aye.
Very unanimous, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On this date, are we going to, is that going to be added to our budget calendar to kind of an update?
The dates of the Budget Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, I don't see why not.
Thank you, Ray.
And we had nothing further on A and F.
All right, thank you. Elementary facilities building committee, do we have a report?
We have no report, we're still attempting to schedule our first meeting.
Okay.
Finding a date that works for everyone.
Thank you for your efforts. I know that it's tricky, it's been difficult, thank you.
Thanks.
Goffstown-New Boston Tuition Committee Report. Brian, do we have some?
I do, I do. As the board had directed me at your last meeting, I also brought to the New Boston School Board the premise around having me have a meeting between the two districts' respective attorneys. That happened last week. I had the chance to meet with both Sarah Murdo and Doug Hatfield, representing the New Boston School District. And it is the position of Sarah, and remains the position, remains the position of Sarah, that the best course of action for us to proceed relative to area is to schedule a special school district meeting in each of the respective towns, and to go through a process that she's outlining for us, and to have something brought forward to the warrant for March. So we are working on what a timeline would look like, because there were special posting requirements, there's a certain number of days in between, you have to have two different actual hearings. That's how we're proceeding at this point, that's the recommendation of council.
When will we have that timeline?
I have the timeline that we just received.
Okay.
And the timeline should be sufficient that if, if this is the course of action, you could do this at your first October meeting, and we would be within, we'd be within the required number of days.
Okay. I saw a question there?
Yep, so the goal for the March meeting is what?
It would be for the March vote, it would...
What are we voting on in March, that's what I'm saying.
Be approving the new AREA between just Goffstown and New Boston.
So the special meeting would be to approve the creation of an area committee.
Precisely.
And then we go through, do the area agreement, and so that we could actually have an area agreement on the ballot.
Precisely, and maybe just to provide a little contextual information, the warrant articles that were approved in each of the three respective districts last year did not have any provision that if Dunbarton withdrew, that authorized Goffstown and New Boston to proceed without Dunbarton. And so that was the rationale.
Yeah, that's the contention. Okay, so the first, you said you have a timeline, but it's, is it anywhere within the next two weeks?
We had our first October meeting.
Yeah. What she's recommending would be to have the posting for the special meeting occur the second week of October. So I think we'd be well within our timelines to do that. And New Boston is also meeting the first week of October, so they could take the same action.
Does the vote at the special meeting have to be by ballot, or can it be voice vote or standing vote or something like that?
I'm not entirely sure, Dan, I would need to research that.
Because we're an S B two town, or we're an S B two school district, so it just, I'm wondering how complicated it's going to be, does it all?
I'll be able to move forward more the first meeting, I'm sure.
I believe so, okay.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Goffstown-Dunbarton Tuition Committee Report. We have an update also, Brian?
Let me start with the update on the parent letter. At your last board meeting, you had directed me to inquire with Dunbarton parents who had an interest in their kids remaining in the Goffstown schools. I did, after your meeting, share that with the Chair of the Dunbarton School Board. The Chair of the Dunbarton Board was uncomfortable with that inquiry coming directly from the SAU, and wanted the inquiry to come from the Dunbarton School Board. We had a chance to meet a couple of times and worked on a compromise, and they were, the Dunbarton Board developed a letter that we sent out from the SAU. We have the calls coming back from parents, gauging their level of interest to the SAU, and the SAU will follow up with phone calls for any parent who don't respond. We had 97 letters that went out. Dunbarton is interested in a tuition arrangement with Goffstown for next year's 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. So current 9th, 10th, and 11th graders only at this point. I know Goffstown had intended for Mountain View students to be able to continue in Goffstown as well. That appears to be an area of disagreement, and I think it has more to do with the new area agreement with Bo, that Bo, I believe, has a say in some of this.
It's, I don't think it's, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't think it's a disagreement, it's that the Gofftown schools' doors are open if the parents would like to send their students here. Anything that, any disagreement would only occur if a parent wished to do that, and then were prohibited from doing so, and that's not something that Gofftown would do. So, so I don't think there should ever be any disagreement there.
Those letters went out on Friday, and we've received between Friday and today both email correspondence and phone calls from about 20 Dunbarton parents, which is, well, just under 20%, or just over 20% of their students, all indicating their preference to remain in Goffstown. So we will keep the board up to date in terms of how those numbers are coming in, and we will also share that information with both Dunbarton and Bo, as obviously they need to know how many students they're planning for as well.
Okay.
If I may, so on the current class sizes, I see 50 students in 7th and 8th grade, so 24 and 26, we might think they were 25, so it's possible out of the 50 students that are MVMS, Dunbarton has said they're not even going to consider that, to the parents of Dunbarton don't even ask. That's what I kind of heard.
I would say that's correct.
Although we say, come on in.
I would say that's correct. Additionally, you should know that the Dunbarton Board has not been able to guarantee students coming here, that there will be a bus coming to Goffstown. So just information.
Just additionally on this committee, we are trying to schedule a time where the joint committees from Goffstown and Dunbarton can meet to discuss the MOU, and outline the MOU, so that is still in the works, but we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Can we do something to make sure that it's very clear to the Dunbarton parents that it's a decision of the Dunbarton School Board that the eighth graders are not, or the middle school students are not included in being able to come to Goffstown, so that we don't have people here that are cranky?
Well, I think, I think this board has been very clear in its intention of allowing current students attending Mountain View and the high school to remain here. As the board knows, you even said they're siblings, so I think that's been printed in the Goffstown news a couple of different times. We're already receiving, in that batch of phone calls that we've already received, some folks had older kids and then a younger child, for example, at Mountain View, and parents are already asking. So at this point, we will keep the Dunbarton Board aware of the situation as well. I think it's been the position of the Dunbarton Board that if parents were requesting a change of school assignment, which is a provision that can occur through the New Hampshire state laws, I think it's RSA 195, that a parent can request a change in school assignment based on best interest, that they would consider those requests on a case-by-case basis, or we would consider those on a case-by-case basis.
All right, SAU executive officers, the Superintendent Search Committee has not met and would be, I would say, waiting in direction of the SAU Board when it meets in October. Superintendent Report.
I'd like to begin with a brief discussion of the letter that I've passed out from the Lions Club. As board members likely recall, there's a field called Lions Field where Goffstown, I'm sorry if I'm not going to be covering. Where the high school baseball team plays. We don't have a baseball field here. In addition, there are, I think, three soccer fields on that facility. The letter from Mr. Gross on behalf of the Lions Club essentially outlines that their situation is they can't continue to fund the operations of the field. Between their costs for mowing, for upkeep, fertilizing, et cetera, it's costing them more than they're getting back. We currently pay $5,000 a year for the use of those fields. In addition, the Tri-Town Soccer League pays about $7,000. So between those two funding streams, in addition to what they're paying out of pocket, the Lions Club is having a struggle, and have essentially sent us and put us on notice that they were hoping for some course of action. Mr. Gross was very clear that it's not any intention of the Lions Club to leave us without fields in any way, that there would be a, what he called a bridge plan. And Mr. Gross also shared a larger vision that board members may be aware of, looking at a parcel of land that the town purchased a couple of years ago, that's I think 60-plus acres over by the transfer station, where there would be a large athletic complex that would have a number of soccer fields, baseball fields... would have a number of soccer fields, baseball fields, it could have a track, it could have a cross-country running area. They talked about possibly relocating other Parks and Recs programs to that site. And so, what Scott was talking about is the Lions Club is trying to figure out what direction they want to go in. Do they want to consider selling this property and investing that money in the town's new fields? Do they want to look at a long-term lease with the school district or Tri-Town Soccer or both? So, we bring this to you, Mr. Labor and I actually had the chance to sit with Scott today and hear a little more about this as follow-up to his letter. We called him and said, "So, you know, we got your letter, Scott," and was hoping to give a little more specifics to the board tonight, and he came into the office today. So, anything to add, Ray?
I think you've covered it.
Yep.
Okay. Looking for some direction from the board as to...
Scott did indicate that he'd be happy to come and share more information. I thought tonight would likely be premature for that, but...
In his letter, he states substantially increase the rent. Do we have an idea of what substantially increase?
What they might be looking for? Well, we asked that and what he had talked about is, I guess the Lions Club had talked about if they doubled our rental fee, so if we went from five thousand to ten thousand. They also talked about that there may be a possibility that the Lions Club would be willing to sort of hand over control of the fields to the school district if we entered into some kind of a lease agreement, which would then make the mowing component of the fields the responsibility of the town, which would save about forty-seven hundred dollars. So, there might be a couple of different ways that we could look at this. So, I think Ray and I would look for direction from the board of what direction you'd like us to take. Would you like me to have Mr. Gross come and present further? And this is all very new to us, so I think some folks might have been aware of this, but...
I think since the town land is, hasn't been developed at all yet, and I don't believe the town has any plans to develop it or any money to put into developing that, I think instead of looking at those lands for the high school baseball field, if we're going to sink money into a new field, I would rather that we looked into having it down here instead of at town fields across town, because then we're going to have to bus our kids
Here on the campus of the high school.
Further, yeah.
How developed is this conversation? Has Rick Willey been looped in on this conversation yet? Are we just, we're in the very early conceptual stages?
We're in the very early stages of this. We have not spoken with Rick, nor have we spoken with Tri-Town Soccer.
Okay, and are there plans to do so? Are there plans to?
Well, I think if that's...
Most of the Lions have had preliminary discussions with both of those groups. The three of us have not yet sat down and had a detailed discussion.
Is it, of the fields that Lions owns, do we use just the baseball or do we also use the soccer fields as well for practice?
I believe they use the soccer fields for practice as well, but definitely the baseball field.
They actually use the baseball field for soccer practice. I didn't wish soccer on here.
Okay.
We got yelled at for using the parks and rec.
There you go. Hank, you had something?
Just for information, Rick has some money in CIP for engineering and that kind of stuff, those fields down by the highway department. Whether it'll pass or not, it's all on, I don't think there's any tax impact on it. I think it's all money that they set aside, impact fees, et cetera. But, so he's going in that far anyway.
Okay.
I think it'd be a long time before he builds any of those.
I just wanted to ask a question, the highway, are you talking on Mass Road or down by the transfer station?
Down by the transfer station, where they dug the gravel out. Though they're still digging the gravel out coming in there.
Does Parks and Rec, do Parks and Rec use those fields as well? Do they pay into the use of those fields? Or is it just...
I don't believe so, and at least not as indicated in the budget that Scott had provided.
Because now I know that Parks and Rec can't use cemetery field anymore since that's a cemetery now, so I'm wondering whether they're planning on doing their practices also, maybe they could gain to the cost of this too.
All right, so it sounds like in general, we are very early on, we need more information, we need more discussions. It's interesting, we'd need to know where Rick falls on this. Will you be setting up meetings? Is that what you have to do?
I guess my recommendation would be, I think it makes sense at this point for Ray and I to schedule a meeting with the Lions Club, with Parks and Recs, and with Tri-Town Soccer, and have a discussion about what direction we'd like to go in, and then maybe come back to the board with a couple of more thought-out possibilities in terms of next steps. And if it's the board's pleasure, I'd be, I'd be happy to ask Scott to come or all of those parties, so that the board could ask questions of them as well.
Let's do this, let's have, schedule your preliminary meetings.
Okay.
And what comes, depending on what comes out of that, I think is going to make a big difference as to who comes to the meeting for presentation and what further dialogue we have. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
To just gather more information, get everything you can, and then we'll make that decision further as it comes closer to the next meeting. Does that sound fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Continuing with the superintendent's report, I wanted to let you know that LGC refund checks for the overpayment of insurance were processed for fiscal year two thousand and eleven on September eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, and FY ten refund checks will be processed by October thirty-first. So, this is a refund to our employees that overpaid during those respective fiscal years, which includes some retirees and some other folks who have since left the district. I wanted to let you know that we're notifying all employees regarding the Affordable Care Act, specifically the availability of health insurance exchanges. We're required to do so within the next, I think, two weeks. Tomorrow, Senator Lou DeLisandro and I will be touring the Goffstown schools, meeting with all building principals. This has been a past practice for Senator DeLisandro and a nice chance for him to see our schools. Diane will be accompanying me along with the other two board chairs from SAU nineteen, Wendy Lambert and Randy Ulet, for a presentation with Commissioner Berry on Common Core State Standards next Monday night, that we were invited to attend with our board chairs. And legislative update, it wasn't listed, but bills have been filed, so at this point we're just at the early stages of, numbers haven't been assigned yet, but bills have been filed, so the process will be stepping up at this point. And also, I wanted to let folks know that there are proposed changes to ED three oh six, which are the so-called minimum standards, and it's a pretty big packet that we've been going through, but I think likely we'll have some information that we'll want to pay particular attention to and likely brief the board as we go forth. And my last piece is, I would like the board to know that tomorrow I'm meeting with Dr. Phil Littlefield, who is the superintendent in Hooksett. And as you might recall, last spring, there was some inquiry being made between the Hooksett School District and Goffstown High School for potential tuition students that didn't seem to go anywhere. And I did reach out to Dr. Littlefield to see if he'd be interested in sitting down and talking about the potential tuition opportunities that we might be able to provide for him, specifically thinking about looking at next year's ninth-grade cohort, which would, depending on their level of interest, might be a replacement for the Dunbarton students who will be leaving us. So, more to come on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, pole business, Sergeant Camp. We have some more details?
We do have some more details. I spoke with the director of the program, and just to provide a little, a little background, Sergeant Camp is a one-week environmental school that students in New Boston and Dunbarton have attended together. It's an overnight camp for many, many years. It's a science curriculum, it's integrated with the state curriculum frameworks, it's hands-on, exploratory, et cetera. And I made inquiry at the board's request if Goffstown students might have a possibility of looking at an enrollment in conjunction with our New Boston neighbors. And New Boston has about eighty kids that are currently in sixth grade, you have about a hundred and seventy. They could not accommodate all those kids. So, if Goffstown, if all of Goffstown wanted to go, they would have to do it. That could happen, but not with New Boston. Another option would be to look at would a, a group of kids, forty kids, fifty kids, et cetera, have an interest in going with the New Boston kids? We did get some preliminary pricing. Larry, the Sergeant Camp Director, would be willing to come and present information if parents have questions, et cetera. The cost is about three hundred and forty-five dollars, which includes a one-time sort of sale as a first-time customer. The standing cost is typically about four hundred dollars for the week. Just to provide a little more context, New Boston, the board pays for, the school district pays for twenty percent of the cost, fundraising pays for twenty percent of the cost, and parents pay the remaining sixty percent of the cost. The New Boston Board was very interested in the possibility of Goffstown students being able to participate. We have not expanded this conversation with the teachers or the teachers' union at this point. There are other components such as chaperones overnight. If we had, say, fifty or so, fifty, fifty-five kids go, assuming boys and girls, you'd probably be looking at six chaperones overnight each night, which could be something maybe done with a combination of teachers, volunteers, there might be other ways to do it, but there are a lot of logistical elements. But, as I was asked to inquire, there is a possibility for at least a pretty decent-sized group of Goffstown students.
I'm disappointed that they can't fit all of the children.
Yeah.
Because like, part of the whole discussion was getting them together, and certainly if, you know, it's a, some are included and some are not, it defeats the purpose, and if you can't go with New Boston, defeats the purpose.
There are a couple of other options. If you think about a Monday-through-Friday type scenario, you could have, and Larry had shared that a lot of school districts do Monday through Wednesday, and then you have a second group go up Wednesday through Friday, so you could essentially double the number of Goffstown students that could go. I guess my fear and my concern was the cost. I think that's a lot of money for parents, I think four hundred dollars out of pocket that you're not planning on, that you haven't had the opportunity to do extensive fundraising, et cetera, would really be prohibitive for a lot of our kids and a lot of our families. So, I think that was, as much as I love the idea, and I think it would be beneficial for both the New Boston kids and the Goffstown kids, I do fear the impact of the cost.
Have we reached out at all to the parent group, just to get a feel for their tenor on this?
Have not done that yet, would be happy to do so.
Might be interesting, because they would, I was unsure, they would likely be point people or integral parts of this planning, specifically as it pertains to the fundraising piece of it, likely the organizational piece. Does the board, does the board continue to be interested in pursuing any different options on this?
I guess there are a couple of things I'm sort of curious about. It seems to me that our communities, all three of them are similar enough, so that a four-hundred-dollar price tag for a week would be daunting for some families, and they might choose to use scarce resources in other ways. And if that's a fair way to look at all of our communities, I guess one of the questions that I'd be interested in knowing about is what the participation rates have been in the past, what they've done. Has there been a hundred percent participation?
If not, I think dangerously close. There might be some behavioral components that treat, some students may not have been allowed to go. But I also think though, for both New Boston and for Dunbarton, this has been a significant ritual, a rite of passage for these kids, that everyone knows in sixth grade you go to Sergeant Camp, and they, I mean, they're talking about it early on, and it's, it's a really, it's an important rite of passage for those...
So, part of it is really building culture around it, too.
Yeah.
But in both of those towns, sixth grade is kind of like eighth grade, really, when you think of it, because they're leaving their community school and moving up, so it really is kind of different for those two communities than it is for Goffstown, though I think it's a wonderful opportunity, absolutely.
One of the things that we talked about a lot at the table last year, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, was figuring out ways to develop transitional opportunities between community schools and coming to the big city, as it were. And this certainly seems like a great opportunity in that regard, because it brings these kids together.
I was just pointing out the difference between those six grades.
I think it would be an amazing opportunity for our Goffstown students, I will say. I've had the opportunity that I go every year and I chaperone one night, stay over in the cabins with the kids, and it is so much fun. They have just really rich experiences. I also inquired if we couldn't do an overnight component, could we consider doing a full-day field trip or something of that nature that maybe go up for a day? So, I was trying to see how many different ways we might be able to salvage something, but it sounds like there are some options. Larry, the camp director, was going to send me kind of a more detailed proposal, but I didn't receive that today.
Okay. Because too, like, you know, the fundraising piece of it, the more time parents have and people have to plan, the better. It just, it helps. I mean, we can get the eighth-grade field trip to D.C., you know, to Boston, so it's just, it's the time component.
You know, and if it was the board's pleasure, we'd be happy to get a sense from the parents. Is this something that you'd be interested in, understanding the cost? And if the number is low, then we might think differently about it, but if the number was, was a little higher, maybe we move forward with something. So, I guess I'd, I'd take direction on that if we wanted to make inquiry with, with the parents directly. I would also do so with MVP and have a conversation with the sixth-grade teachers as well.
I think that's wise.
It seems as though even if, if some of the Goffstown students could go, there would be some transitional things happening, because there would be some Goffstown kids in Boston, Dunbarton kids, so that when the other two towns came, they would know some students here, even if the whole group can't go. You know what I mean?
And, I mean, one of the great things is, they already know a lot of kids. Between kids playing Tri-Town Soccer and going to the Y, I mean, so we have that, that connection, but this would just be another, just a wonderful, rich learning experience in addition to the transition.
But it seems like a fabulous opportunity. I've heard nothing bad.
It's fantastic.
I've heard nothing bad about it.
I come back, you know, my neck's a little sore every year, but it's really fun.
All right, so you will continue to explore.
And one little question, the four hundred dollars, he was doing a three hundred and forty-five dollar initial, there's, must be an added cost for the, for the chaperones? Is there an added cost or is it all volunteer?
Well, the way that New Boston does it is, New Boston actually has a component built into their teacher contract about Sergeant Camp, that teachers receive essentially a stipend.
It's a stipend.
But those teachers are basically there twenty-four hours a day, you know, for the, for the five days. The teachers sleep in the dorms. In this day and age, we always double up and have two adults in the, in the buildings with the kids, so it's, it's a pretty big time impact. I don't know, again, haven't made inquiry with the teachers in terms of what the level of interest might be. We might have to think differently about reaching out to volunteers, et cetera, but the way that we broke it out is if you had fifty, between fifty and sixty kids, you'd probably need six chaperones a night, would be probably what we'd be looking at. And maybe you could do a combination? I'll go. I'll volunteer, Mr. Labor.
I'd go.
It's fun.
Jenny?
Without putting you on the spot, I wonder if our MVMS lady would like to...
Without putting you on the spot, Jenny.
Yeah, well, we are.
Jenna, please don't.
Well, but before she responds, just know that Jenna is incredibly dedicated. She's on the PBIS leadership team, she coaches things, she does student council, I mean, you name it, and you can, if you say, Jenna, do you think you could do, okay.
I don't mean asking, I don't mean asking her to do it. What, does she think that the students and the parents' reaction would be?
I think the students would like it, just because, like, for us, like, eighth graders are always like, oh, seventh grade, we go to Boston, like, that's our big thing. Even this year, that's all they talk about, like, are we going to get to go, what's going to happen? Like, they look forward to those big things. So I think in sixth grade, to know that they're going to go somewhere fun, I see a huge yes by the kids. Usually, parents try to make it work. This is a little bit higher on the price. But like you were saying, if we could maybe not go this year, but fundraise for it so that they wouldn't have the bigger cost, they'd probably be more in. But I know the kids would, it would be like the pilot of, you know, sixth grade, this is what you do. Because I know that's how it is in seventh grade, that's all they talk about.
And I think it might be one of those things, that you start and let it grow over time, as, as Philip said, as it becomes part of the, the culture of the school. You know, so again, I, I don't like the idea of kids who can go and kids who can't go, but, but maybe you start with a smaller group, and next year it's a little bigger, and, and we, we try to figure it out.
Develop something.
Okay.
And as we said, oh, I'm sorry. When I was in Barnstable many years ago, we did that, had the kids go, and they loved it. They had a ball. They had a ball. And it is, it's a great, it's a great, great camp, a great camp.
Two logistical questions. About what time of year is that?
Spring.
It's in the spring.
In the spring. And it is in what town?
It's in Hancock.
Okay.
And it's actually a-
It's not that far.
No, it's not that far. It's a wonderful facility that's owned by Boston University.
Yep.
And it's a great facility. They have, in addition to their camp, they have two different ropes courses, they have dining halls, they have a, a lake, they, it's, it's, it's a nice place.
And if we were thinking about this, we could get the fifth graders this year to start putting on their fundraisers. And then sixth grade next year, they would have in the pot, so that you would be working in, in building up fifth grade into sixth grade, the money could turn over, however that works. That could be something we could think about right now.
Yeah.
There's no reason why not.
Okay. I'll come back with more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifth and sixth grade New Boston students participating in MBMS sports?
As New Boston had inquired, and you folks did respond, in the past, you have allowed Dunbarton students who played in non-cut sports. So that means track, wrestling, and cross-country. And it's my understanding that there is a letter that went out, I believe, on behalf of Goffstown, allowing Dunbarton students to do that. I don't know how many, if any, participate in that for fifth and sixth grade, but if it's the board's pleasure, we would extend the same offer to the New Boston students. Again, I have no sense of what the interest level would be, and transportation would be the parents' responsibility for this.
Liability issues for the New Boston students, is that ours or theirs?
I would say that generally it would fall under our, our liability. Ray, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Dan asked the question, is there any additional cost to that?
For the insurance?
For the insurance for having additional kids in the program from a different town?
Wouldn't open.
Okay.
It's a blanket policy, indeed.
I wouldn't underwrite that one.
I think I answered him to ask the question last time.
We all share the same.
I'd like to make a motion that we send that letter to the Boston students, they may participate in non-cut sports.
I'll second that.
Do you have a second, Dan? Any further discussion?
Good point.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. New business, emergency grant discussion.
I had asked Chief Sullivan if he might be able to come this evening, but I know he's at a selectmen's meeting. He had an interesting opportunity come across his desk that he has made us aware of, that I wanted to share with the board. There is a FEMA-
I found it.
Okay. We're gonna not look into that too far. There is a FEMA grant opportunity available for weather-related emergencies for municipalities and school districts. This is what Chief Sullivan has shared with me. I have not seen the grant, but he has told me that he would be applying. I did offer to help write it, or whatever assistance we could make. But essentially, it's a matching funds grant that for any capital projects that we might pursue, half of the cost would be paid for by FEMA.
Like outback.
Like outback. Precisely correct, Mr. Panko. So what we were thinking is, we did, I think I briefed the board after the Labor Day flood that we had here, one of the Labor Day floods, important to remember, we had two. Ray and I met with Jerry Aggett and Carl from the DPW and looked at options. We've since done a little further investigation, and Meridian Land Services, which is the company that did the site work when the parking lot in the building was expanded during the last renovation phase here at the high school, we had a gentleman and an engineer who happens to be a Goffstown parent, who came out and gave us some ideas around some drainage opportunities and things that could enhance our drainage flow, et cetera. So we are in the early stages of this, but again, I haven't seen the grant that Chief Sullivan has, but he has indicated to me that he's fully on board with applying. It's only for police, it has to go through the police departments, it's not something that we can directly apply for. But we are costing on some options, and we'll pursue that if it's the board's pleasure to do so.
Sounds wise.
But why is FEMA giving away money?
I don't know. It's not that, well-
Federal emergency management.
There's another grant that the town received that's still fresh in my mind, so I'd be curious to see action in the application.
As would I.
Yeah.
As would I. And like I said, I did inquire if Chief Sullivan might have been able to be here tonight to share more details with the board, and he was unable.
Okay. Are you okay with this?
I will. I will.
Thank you. Deliberative session date?
Do we have like, what, two Saturdays or a week to figure it out in February?
Looking at February eighth, is that consistent with the, the Saturday we typically? And then we have to set a snow date of, is it that Sunday? It has to be twenty-four hours or forty-eight?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
A minimal of twenty-four, between twenty-four and, you know, later than the last day. It could be the seven days, because there's eight days that we've got, we can have a limit of seven. If we have it on the first, then if it's a snow date, we can go all the way.
That is vastly different from conversations that have taken place at the table before, telling us quite the opposite. We've discussed in the past, because we have set snow dates that way-
Yep.
-and then been informed it had been done so incorrectly, that in fact, we had to do it within, we only had a window of like, a couple days. Because last year, our delivery session was scheduled on a Saturday, and our snow date was the following Monday.
Yep.
Because we felt we had to, we were of the understanding that we had, like, four, it would have been forty-eight hours, and that was our last possible time.
Twenty-four, isn't it?
Just pass it in and have set. Okay.
Do you have the site on the, the RSA on this piece? I don't know if it's in there.
That's your Goffstown?
They have a schedule, it's published, it's on their website, it gives you the latest-
The DRA.
Yeah.
Can we send it in?
Okay. All right. So we're, we, the eighth is actually consistent with the Saturday that we met previously?
Yes.
Okay. When do we need to have this finalized?
Well, this inquiry came from the town. Sue was asking when our delivery was going to be. She didn't want to do it on the same day. So I think they're just not planning-
They usually don't. They usually do theirs on a Monday night.
And I think that's what they're asking.
Okay. Are we in agreement, Saturdays are still suitable to, to us? Okay. Do you have time? Come again? We did. So we're looking at Saturday the eighth, this is an appropriate date?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Brian, Saturday the eighth.
Okay.
Thank you. And what will-
Saturday the eighth.
Okay. We have a Riverwalk request. I believe we have some, some company here tonight?
I do. I'd like to invite up Mr. Farley, and I'll let him do his introductions with his folks who are here. Kevin's the curriculum coordinator here at the high school, and turn it over to Mr. Farley.
Okay, well, we're here to talk to you about a facilities use request that we submitted on behalf of the River Rage Committee, and I have a group here to answer any of your questions. At first, Ed Forcer, who is the chair of the River Rage Committee. And the River Rage Committee is a multi-team, a multi-school committee in Manchester that has been in existence for about a decade, and is the chair. I have Stu Lewin, who is a parent here, and also the chair of the Team 501, the Goffstown Robotics Team Steering Committee. And I have Sam Lewin here, who is the co-captain of the Goffstown Team 501 Robotics Team. And what we have done is, we've submitted a building, a facilities use request to host a fairly large event here at Goffstown. It has been in, around for about a decade, it's been held at Memorial High School for some time, and there has been a request to host it here this time. River Rage, you, you might know about the robotics team. I'm sure you've heard of the First Robotics competitions, you may have seen the competitions at the Verizon Center, the big events that happened at the end of February, the beginning of March. But what you might not know is that these teams are, they stay working throughout the year, and they attend a number of smaller local competitions. And one of them is the River Rage, which is a group of teams from the area, Manchester, as well as the surrounding areas, that compete in one event as an off-season competition. It keeps the team together, it keeps them working on the robots, it keeps them fundraising, it raises morale, it keeps the kids in a cohesive group. So the River Rage, we're, we're hoping to have it here. The reason we're here with a building request is that it is large, and we want to tell you a little bit about it or answer any of your questions. So Ed has been the one chairing this, and he's the one with the most information, the nitty-gritties of the logistics of the River Rage, so I'm gonna put it on you.
All right. Welcome, I mean, good evening. My name is Ed Forcer.
Welcome to you.
I, I was born and brought up in Parnardville, up there on Lodge Street, and my ex and I used to own a little ranch house here on the Cornwallon Field Park in Massaro, but that was a long time ago. But Eddie, you've had, and sitting there tonight as an audience specter, I was, I was impressed that you folks are so professional and polite to each other compared to the school board where I'm from, but at any rate. I just wanted to say that, I was like, oh, this is cool. But at any rate, I do First Robotics. And you know that that's Dean Kamen's little baby, and I've been doing it since day one, practically. And we start, I started out doing the research and design, and then I got a teaching job at West, where I ran the First Robotics Team over there. And it was mostly West kids and Bedford kids. And then my kids used to go to Dean's summer camp and run robotics camp, and one day they came over and they said, Mr. Forcer, Mr. Forcer, we got this kid from Goffstown, we really want him, we really want him, can we have him, please, please, please? So that's how come you guys got involved. Goffstown students are with the First 501 Team, because Michael Priscazza was a student here, just now graduated from University of North Carolina, has got a big fancy job working for some auto company down there, and I keep getting emails from his mom saying how wonderful he's doing. But then his sister was on the First Robotics Team, she was from Goffstown. Last year, Nicole Lyle graduated from Goffstown, is now a student at Virginia Tech, and this was a kid that never, never, almost got out of Parnardville. And we took her to St. Louis, and she was like, blown away, like, the culture that's out there. So this program does a whole lot of other things. So the reason we have a one-day event is because some of my fellow mentors said, you know, we spent too much time and effort and money building these things, just to use them for one event. So we ought to have a one-day thing. So it started out in Plymouth, Mass., called Rumble on the Rock, and then one of my parents said, you know, Ed, we ought to do this in Manchester, at River Fest. So I said, okay. So that was seventeen years ago. And we've been doing River Rage for the last seventeen years. And when River Fest died out, we had it over at West, and we outgrew West and we went to Memorial, and we kind of like grew that building out pretty much. And the reason we're asking to come and use your facility is because of scheduling issues, the way the calendar is set up this year with SATs, ACTs, and all of those things that we cannot use the Memorial facility. So we are requesting that we come and use your facility, okay? So what do we expect here? Well, on Friday night, our crew's going to come in and is going to transform your gym. We're gonna lay down a carpet, we're going to lay down a playing field with aluminum sides, electronics, lights, and all that good stuff, so that we can play the game, which has some field goals that the, the robots this year shoot frisbees into. So which is kind of like, amazing to see a frisbee shoot fifty-seven feet and obviously hit the target, which is better than when I do it like that. But at any rate, they do that quite well. And then we need the cafeteria to sell food and to an area for the call of pits, so that people can fix their robots, because it kind of like gets banged up and beat up and all of that. We have thirty teams coming. I have one from New York, three from Connecticut, two from Rhode Island, ten from Massachusetts, and fifteen from New Hampshire, and three from Maine, something like that. So they come from all over. This is the seventeenth year we're doing this, is this is the longest-running, one-day off-season event in the world. Not just the United States, not just New Hampshire, but the whole world. I mean, we're talking events in England, in Israel, and Alaska, and Hawaii, and places like that. So we're kind of like, pretty proud of that. A lot of the teams use this to bring students who've never seen robotics before or want to be involved in a program that, they're athletic, like me, I was never an athlete, this is something that I would do, because I was more hands-on oriented, liked to make things and stuff like that. This is the kind of program that does that. First is really a great program, even though I've retired from teaching, I still do this because I really like what it does for the kids, okay? If those of you have a new car, like, within the last couple of years, you know that you don't have power steering anymore, you have electronic steering. And I found out that the technology that the kids learn in programming robots and in wiring up the robots and writing the programs to make the robots do what they want it to do is the same technology that you use to, in the new automobiles today. The same computer logic system, the same stuff they use in the new 787 Dreamliner. So this program is really current and high-tech. This program really well runs well because of mentors and advisors, engineers, teachers, bookkeepers, advertisers, who all bring these skills to the students so that they can learn about stuff in life that you cannot get in a traditional classroom, because, well, we all know, can't do everything in a classroom, you know? They keep stuffing more stuff than we need to do, and we just can't get it all done. So a lot of the kids like, you know, like the First program, because it includes them into an activity that makes them part of the school. So that's, so that's why I like, like First, because of those kinds of things. So again, again, the reason we're asking is for your approval into doing this is because it gives the students an opportunity to be involved in something that they like, gives them the opportunity to meet new friends, it gives them the opportunity to participate in hands-on robotics, to give them skills and interpersonal skills that they can use in life, okay? So like a lot of teams, what they'll do, they come here, is they'll take like freshmen who want, who want to know- who want to know what it is, and they'll let them drive the robot, and they'll see what competition's really like. So the funny part about all of this, if I was to bring a robot here and let you drive it, most of you wouldn't, because you'd be afraid to break it, but you wouldn't, don't worry. So that's what we're asking, that's why we're here for tonight. The Goffstown team has kids from Manchester, West Side, from Goffstown, from New Boston, and from Hooksett, so it includes a whole lot of kids in this particular activity, and that's one of the reasons that we're asking, is because your kids are part of the host team, and that's why we're here. So do they have any questions?
If I could maybe just add for the board, that typically we wouldn't bring a facilities use request to your attention, but I thought that you'd be interested to know what this event was. I'd like to thank Mr. Farley for his leadership in working with the team and coordinating this. Mr. McBride is in support of this event. We did have some initial concerns that there may be a potential damage to the floor, but they've worked with Jerry Aggett, and it's my understanding that, and Mr. Fountain as well, thank you Kevin, to make sure that there's no potential risk to the floor with the robots and shooting and all the things that they do. But it sounds like they've got it really well coordinated. The impact on food service, they would be paying for one of our cooks to be on-site, to open up the kitchen for them. It's our understanding that they'd be bringing their own grills and cooking cheeseburgers out back or something of that nature, but really sounds like a nice opportunity. I'd love to hear from our student who also participates, if there's anything he'd like to share as well.
Because, because we would provide, we would provide, the playing field is a carpet, it's that thick, so...
We would lay a mat down.
Yeah, you would lay a mat, we lay a mat down, put the carpet down.
Yeah, I did speak to Steve Fountain, the athletic director, we do have a mat for the gym floor, not an issue at all to protect the gym floor. I also spoke to Arthur Adamakis, who's the principal at Memorial High School, and he was very supportive, he said his, I don't want to misquote him, but he said something to the effect that on Monday when he came back to school, he had no inkling that any large event had happened in his building, it was in good order back to shake the way that he left it on Friday. So the gym floor's not an issue.
And I'd just like to add, Merrimack High School does a similar, they do it in the late spring, we do it in the fall, so they, you know, any number of years it's been in their gym, and there are also high schools across the country that have, as Ed mentioned, these types of things, so having it, you know, in a high school, in a gymnasium is not a, is not an abnormal condition, and you know, they have them year after year after year, so clearly they're not destroying the facility, it's part of those things.
The First Engineering Team is very well aware of the value of a gym floor, and they designed the game and whatever around that thing to make sure that it doesn't get damaged. Like I said, where there's a carpet, we take the mat, put the mat down first, put the carpet on top of that, and that is the playing field. So the robots never use oil or any of that stuff, so the floors don't get ruined, the carpets don't get ruined, so it's pretty well thought out, you know? Yes?
What is the date?
The date is Saturday, October 26th. We would set up Friday night after school, because it takes a good six hours to do that, and then the event is Saturday, the 26th. We plan on being here by 6:30 in the morning, the team starts showing up around 7:00. Usually the event is done by 4:30, 5 o'clock, and then we tear everything down, clean up, and we're gone.
About how many?
How many people? Probably about four, 500 people, we expect. 30 teams with 10 people each is about 300 people. And lastly, I would like you all to come and visit, and see what we've done to your gymnasium, and see the enthusiasm of the kids.
Or what you have done.
Well, no, I mean, it's really neat to see this, this big, humongous playing field, it's 54 feet long, 27 feet wide, it's got these high-end barriers that are as high to the ceiling that they shoot frisbees into, and then it's got this big, this particular game has a big, tall ladder structure in the middle that the robots climb up on, and it's just, it's just amazing, and the kids do some of the designing, the adults do some of the designing, the kids do the machining, the adults do the machining, the kids do the wiring, the kids do the programming under the adults' supervision, and it's just like a regular company, there's a lot of give and take, and you know, my idea's better than your idea, and somebody has to step in and say, "This is the way it's gonna be, too bad." That's the real world, you know? And it's, the kids get that, and then when they leave college, when they leave here to go to college, they have a better understanding of working in groups, and then when they leave, their companies now know about First, that if a kid says, "I've done First for four years," they get a better shot at getting a job than a kid who hasn't.
I think also, Mr. Farley was excited that this may spark more interest in Goffstown students to participate. When we think about kids being college and career-ready, and thinking about skills around innovation and critical thinking and problem-solving and collaboration, this aligns beautifully with what we're doing at Goffstown High School.
Now, Brian, you mentioned that this is a facility use request, which typically doesn't come before the board. Is this just an FYI you're looking for?
No, this was just an FYI. We didn't want to have an event of this size. Originally, I think Kevin was thinking that 600 people, we didn't want to have 600 people and teams from all over New England with robots in the gym without the board being aware.
Jenny? Just a logistical question, because I know there's been an issue before when we've had a big event, that wouldn't be a big football game going on that day, or...
There are non-athletic events going on that day. That's the first thing we checked on.
Always good.
Because I know one other time we had, and it was just, it was a mess because of parking.
Okay, is there an entrance fee?
There is, any First event is free and open to the general public.
Nice.
There is an entry fee for the teams coming in, because we have to pay for police, your custodian, your cook, we have to rent a truck, we have to get certain things, so there is an entry fee for the teams.
They have their own insurance.
But that's just, that's just to cover the expenses, and yes, we have insurance, all of those kinds of things.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you very much. So I hope to see you all, please do come.
Absolutely, I've got it on my calendar. Thank you, guys.
One final question, if I can?
Go ahead, Dan.
Because we talked, what time would we have to arrive to see the First?
The First, First match is, the opening ceremonies is at 8:30.
8:30, okay. That's really worth answering the question. Because 6:30, you'd be here, but...
But we have to make sure the stuff works and organize all of that stuff, and teams come in, and we have to make sure we know where to park their buses and cars and all that good stuff.
So you'd be doing your own crowd control.
Yes, yes. We take care of pretty much everything. We've done this for 17, 16 years now, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got nominations, it looks like we have one teacher, then some co-curricular sports, and then co-curricular non-sports. Brian?
The one teacher, the board will recall at your last meeting, we did notify you that we were proceeding with hiring the second ESOL teacher that we did budget for, but last spring weren't entirely sure that we would need, and then we had, I believe, 21 students move in over the summer, so this is that position. So that was really the only one I wanted to point out, and I think there's only two, three new people, four new people on this list.
Okay. And regarding the new people, do you know how they were vetted, or...
The advisors, actually, Mr. Farley might have had a hand in that. The advisors went through the process with Mr. McBride, and were, Kate Bracy is a, has been a para here at the high school for a number of years, he did a long-term sub last year at Mountain View, is a great, he's a great young guy, math teacher. Caitlin Kofing has been here for a while. Who else is new? Deanna Goodwin, down at the bottom, for Strength and Conditioning, she's our in-school suspension teacher, and is a certified business teacher who went to SNU. Krista Scarlett has been a teacher here at the high school for many years, so pretty much all your own folks.
Do I have any questions or discussion? Do I have any more? Phillip, you made a motion, what is your motion?
To accept.
To accept all nominations as presented? And I have a second from Jenny. Do I have any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. Any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Seeing none, we have no non-public this evening, I would entertain questions for John. Phillip, do I have a second? Seconded by Rhonda. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you very much.